... One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway-
Here.
Lennon-
Here.
Martin-
Here.
Piana-
Here. Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
For move.
Actually, I'd like to remove the presentation, please, from the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission.
All right. The agenda's been moved with the removal of the presentation. I'm sure that's okay with you, Councilman?
Yes, so.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Martin. Is there any other discussion on the agenda this evening? If not, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Galloway-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So we've removed the presentation, which brings us already to call the audience. Call the audience, as you know, is 30 minutes now. More time needed if needed afterwards to discuss anything that's not on the agenda, because you'll get an opportunity to do that on the agenda. So also, per our new rules last time, remember, if it's on the consent agenda, now is your time to talk about that as well. So three minutes per speaker. Give us your name and address, and good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name's Trevor Johnson, and I'm coming before you tonight in regards to the Ferndale Farm in partnership with the Ferndale Recreation Department. We have a 50-by-100-foot plot in Garbutt Park that we are doing a CSA in, which stands for Community Supported Agriculture. And this is an economic model where people pay the farm upfront for a share of produce that they get throughout the season. This is going to be a really small plot, so there's only three shares. And we've sold a share and a half already. One to Councilman Dan Martin, and another one to a local restaurant, what used to be Villanova, which is going to be a local restaurant, local kitchen and bar. A fellow named Rick Halberg is purchasing a share for his restaurant, so he can have that food for his customers. Shares are, we have one and a half left, and you can purchase a half-share at $350. A full share is $700, and that's a bag of produce for the entire season, which goes from May, June, to October. And we have things going from parsley, leeks, Swiss chard, Brussels sprouts, spinach, sweet potatoes, potatoes, cilantro, and I'm just randomly picking stuff. So you can get ahold of me at 248-894-4059 for a application, and I look forward to a wonderful season.
Thank you. Are there questions, Council?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, this plot was put in last year, and it got to a point where we had to send our DPW over there to clean it up. The weeds were growing all along the sides. It was a mess. It was just a complete ice storm. Nobody attended to it. But if they did, it wasn't a very good job. Is that not going to happen this year?
Well, if I, well, first of all, no, it won't. And I don't think the DPW actually cleaned it up. I went there-
The folk have sent a crew over there to edge around the edge and-
After I've cleaned it up, and they had told me that they would pick up stuff if I would just put it in a pile, and they said that they'd do that. And yes, that did get a little out of hand. The timing for the season and availability of labor was a little strange last year because of the way the whole thing was funded. We had funds available for materials, which we didn't necessarily need, because we got them by donation, but not labor.
Okay.
And so I do apologize for that, but yes, that will be taken care of this year.
We'll put you on double secret probation this year.
Yes, yes. Don't tell the DPW, don't tell them to take my water key away, please. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Trevor.
Anyone else for, call the audience?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jerome Raska, and I'm here on behalf of the Ferndale Rotary Club, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of an upcoming fundraiser event we have, which is scheduled for Thursday, March 8th, at 6:00 p.m. at Shriner Silver Gardens in Southfield. It is a fundraiser that will be done in the manner, and the title of it is "The Winter Warm-Up", and with the change in the weather, it'll be a welcome thing. We've gone with a theme of a soup tasting, and I'm excited to announce that we have 10 area restaurants and catering companies that have come forward to help support this event. And it's Zazio's of Birmingham, Panini Press from Berkeley, Torino's Espresso Bar from Ferndale, Cliff Bell's from Detroit, Dino's Lounge in Ferndale, Asaji Bistro in Ferndale, The Emory in Ferndale, Doubletree Fort Shelby in Detroit, How's Bayou in Ferndale, and Eagle Catering, which, for those of you that don't know, happens to be the catering from the Ferndale school system. And all of them are bringing what they deem to be their best soup, and there will be a People's Choice Voting Contest going on, as well as celebrity judges that will be there to select the winner of the Golden Ladle Award, which will prove to be an annual event. The proceeds are going to benefit the Ferndale Rotary Club to help support our many activities that we do here within the community, as well as internationally. But most well-known would be probably our scholarships that we currently give to Ferndale graduating seniors. We give three scholarships each year. We would like to up that to 10 sometime in the near future, and this is our first step making that direction. So we need support from the community. We've already got support from the restaurants and the venues, so we're looking to spread the word and have attendance. $25 a person includes the soup tasting, salad and bread bar, as well as a full dessert table. It's really quite a great deal, and Shriner Silver Gardens has generously donated their facility for us, and has included two drink tickets with each of your $25 tickets. So now, there's really no reason to say no. Again, it's Thursday, March 8th, starts at 6:00. Come help support the Ferndale Rotary Club, and Sherry has some sign or something she made. So, yes, that's correct. We do have an over-the-top sign auction that has some items that are partnered together that are getaway weekends that you'll want to take part of.
Wonderful.
Hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jerome. Appreciate it. And Sherry?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie Hall. I'm the Director of Community Relations for the Ferndale Schools. And first and foremost in my mind tonight is that tomorrow is Election Day. Tomorrow is the Ferndale Schools Bond Millage election, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone remembers that. It is designed to fund building improvements throughout our district, and a few of the key elements that are in that bond are removing the remaining asbestos at Ferndale High School and Middle School, which will allow us to install energy-efficient heating, cooling, and lighting. We'll also be able to install full-service kitchens at Roosevelt and University High School, where they currently only have storage kitchens. And we would also be able to invest a significant portion of those funds in technology upgrades, which will allow us to keep pace with emerging instructional technology. Anyone who needs last-minute information about the bond can find a detailed list of all those items on our website. There's an informational brochure. Frequently asked questions have been added to throughout this whole campaign period, and that's at www.ferndalschools.org. And then finally, Council, I just wanted to remind you that we have invitations out to you from our school board for the March 20th meet-and-greet, and I'm still waiting, watching for some of those RSVPs.
Thanks for publicly calling us out.
I am calling you out. I'm inviting you. It's my opportunity to do it face-to-face. I know who you are, and you know where to find me. It's an informal gathering, and we're inviting all the municipalities that the district serves. And I just want to say thank you always for, you know, the work that we do together. We serve the whole community, the students, but you, everybody. So just thank you, and remember, tomorrow's Election Day.
Stephanie, put me down as a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Meet-and-greet, is that information on your website?
I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Will you please?
Another one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Me as well, but I'm putting it in my book for the 20th. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Mr. Board Member, how are you, sir?
Good evening. Keith Warnock, thank you very much. Here representing the Citizens for Quality Schools. And to piggyback on what Stephanie said, I'm asking all of the registered voters in the Ferndale School District to get out tomorrow, February 28th, and vote yes for our bond initiative. As she said, a lot of this work designed for mechanical upgrades and energy-efficient lighting. These projects were decided by a group of 20 citizens during the summer. They were reviewed, discussed, debated, and in some cases demanded that things be added or removed from the bond list that we put together. And then it came to the decision that the best projects that needed to be done totaled to 28-point, or 22.8 million, I'm sorry. Those that might be concerned about how fiscally responsible we might be with this money, on our last bond, we were able to do extra projects because of some of the bids that we were able to get during that timeframe. And recently, our administration was able to refinance some of the previous bonds, and that will save our current district taxpayers nearly a million dollars in taxes. So you can be sure that the school board and administration will be conservative in making sure that these funds are spent wisely. I believe personally that a safe and healthy and comfortable environment for students will lead to and promote improved student achievement. There's many reports out there that prove that, and that is certainly our ultimate goal. So one last request again, to make sure that you get out tomorrow, the 28th, and vote yes for our bond. Thank you very much, and I'll see you on the 20th. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Jim O'Donnell. I am coming here on behalf of the library just to let everybody know about our Ferndale Reads book for 2012, which is "The Local News" by Miriam Gershau. She is an author, she now lives in Oregon, but she went to Berkeley High, graduated in 1988. And we hope that the whole city will read this book. We have copies of this book available for free at the library, and along with the book, you can get a calendar of events. Two events that I want to highlight on the calendar are on March 15th, we have the book party at the Emory. So come turn out at 7:30 on March 15th. You get a free drink with your library card, and there's appetizers and good book discussion of the book. And on March 29th, the author, Miriam Gershau, will visit the library. She'll give a talk, and then we'll have a little afterglow party. There will be free tickets available at the library beginning also on March 15th. So the author event is on March 29th, the Emory book party's on March 15th. And for young people, tweens and early teens, we have this book called "11" that they're reading as part of the Ferndale Reads program. And their events will wrap up with a Kids' Mystery Party at the library on 28th of March. So visit the library website, ferndalpubliclibrary.org for more information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Hello. I should say, good evening. Christina Shepardous, Ferndale DDA Executive Director. This Wednesday, we have our monthly Ferndale meeting. It will be held at 9:00 a.m. at H&R Block, which obviously it is tax season, so they want you to come on in too. But they are located at 184 West Nine Mile. We'll be talking about diversity and building connections. So actually, a little bit stemming from your goal-setting, but also, we've found that really talking about diversity amongst our own businesses, and how can we really reach out and connect with each other better and grow our diversity, because we already know that we're a very diverse group. So hope that many will come out and join us. It is a short meeting, only an hour, and then we kick you out. So come on out, and then you can get back to business. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Christina. Anyone else who would like to address Council this evening? If not, we'll close call the audience, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. These are items that we consider routine by the City Council, and we enact in one motion. There's no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case we will remove it from the consent agenda. And this is where we're going to do the audience participation. Cheryl Lynn, I'm looking at you. So if there are audience members who have a specific question about the consent agenda, I would invite you to ask those now. Let me read the consent agenda, so that you know what's on it. A, approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held February 13, 2012. B, approval to revoke the handbill permit issued to Petros Distribution for violations of our Ferndale Code of Ordinances. C, approval of the special event permit and closure of the alley behind the Rust Belt Market for Metro Detroit Street Eats on March 21st of this year, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. D, approval for the Ferndale Public Library to serve alcohol during an event on April 22nd of this year, contingent upon the stipulation detailed in the attached resolution. E, approval to adopt the revision to City Civil Service Rule Number 5, Section 3, provisional appointment as recommended by the Civil Service Board at their meeting in January. F, approval to support the partnership between the cities of Ferndale, Berkeley, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak to accept a grant for the Woodward-Fife Sustainability Partnership as submitted by our city manager. And approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review of the Council Finance Committee. What is Council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Galloway. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon-
Yes.
Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda, item A is consideration to set a public hearing on March 26, 2012, for liquor license renewals in noncompliance.
Cheryl Lynn.
Cheryl Lynn, is there anything you'd need us to, I mean, this is a standard thing we do every year, but-
Did you all get the updated list that was at your license?
I didn't, so could you make sure I get one? I don't seem to have one, unless that's mine's got it.
I took one at your place, Mayor, so you can have it.
We might need another one, but I know you'll get me one. Okay.
Dan, anything you want to add about, do they need?
No, I think the, just as Council's aware, every year you have an opportunity to weigh in with respect to compliance of the license establishments in the city's adopted resolution that outlines the criteria that those establishments must adhere to, including being current with taxes and bills owed to the city. The list that Cheryl Lynn has proposed identifies the lists that are currently in noncompliance. Typically, the majority of those establishments will achieve compliance prior to the public hearing date, but setting the date of the public hearing is appropriate at this time.
And Dan, to be clear, this list is all of the liquor licenses, and the only ones that were concerned about for this public hearing are the ones with total out of balances in that second to last column, correct?
That is correct. My understanding is that the city departments would have considered other issues associated with the licensed establishments, and there were no other violations associated with the city's adopted policy, that the only violations were with respect to the taxes and bills owed.
Okay. Thank you. So unless there's any questions, a motion would be in order to set that public hearing?
I move to receive the report and make it a matter of record, and also direct that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, March 26, 2012, at 7:30 regarding the nonrenewal of class C license, and that the city attorney's office prepare and have served appropriate legal notice of the scheduled hearing to any establishments that are in question and/or those establishments that are delinquent and paying taxes that are due on February 29, 2012, according to the assessors' report as of noon, Thursday, March 1st.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Galloway. Is there any other discussion, questions on this item?
Just for clarification, Mayor-
Yes.
This list is subject to change based on the assessors' list that will be generated in-
As of the date.
That's right. So it will hopefully shrink, but I'll be provided that information by the city manager's office later in the week.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin-
Yes.
Piana-
Yes.
Galloway-
Yes.
Lennon-
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Regular agenda item B is the discussion of draft ordinances numbers 1119, 1120, and 1121, amending Chapter 7, Business Regulations and Licenses, to set licensing regulations and procedures for mobile vending, sidewalk vending, and solicitation. And Madam Clerk, I believe this is your item.
This is, city attorney's of mine. It's actually been a collaborative effort with everyone, every department, and the DDA, and the city attorney. This is in response to a lot of the issues we experienced last summer as the trend of mobile vending exploded, and we see no reason to expect that that trend will not continue. So we tried to address vending by splitting it into basically two separate areas. There's sidewalk vending, which are the push carts, mobile vending, which are the trucks. And Dan can speak to some of the finer points of this. And we're specifically concerned, a lot of these ordinances, with the downtown district. So vending is, with these ordinances, vending would be allowed throughout the city, but within the downtown district, it would be restricted to places set by resolution of council. And right now, we seem to be in agreement between the DDA and us with City Hall parking lot, like the Northern Rose being used for the trucks, and the pedestrian alley between Nine Mile and West Troy being used for the sidewalk carts. Other than changing the hours that vending is not allowed, I think the draft ordinances say two. We'd like to extend those to three. That's the DDA's request. The police chief had no problem with that, correct? And I think the draft ordinances as submitted indicate that the vendors could connect to city utilities with permits, but we would like to strike all that and not allow them to connect to city utilities at all. They would have to provide their own power source. But, and these, like I said, are just proposals. Dan, what else am I missing?
Well, I think one item for Council to keep in mind is that with respect to the downtown vending district, which essentially mirrors the commercial business district, there will be a limit with respect to both sidewalk vending operators and mobile vending operators that are allowed. And that would be based on the number that Council, with input from staff, sets. To the extent that there are more applicants than spots, it would be proposed that that be taken lottery basis, and, you know, those that are successful in the lottery would have the benefit of that spot for that period of time. For the mobile vending, there is the proposal that they reimburse the city for the costs associated with that lost parking spot. Elsewhere in the city, outside the framework of the downtown vending district, vending would be allowed everywhere in the city with the appropriate licensure. So it's a pretty fundamental change from the existing ordinance, and it tries to balance by the set number the interests of existing businesses that are utilizing, either owning or renting properties, with those vendors who wish to receive the benefit of the vibrant downtown area.
The other thing I want to point out is this would not change what we changed last year, which takes private property out of licensing requirements. So for instance, anything in front of the Rust Belt Market on that area that they own, if Jock's Tacos wants to be at Ferndale Radiator, it won't involve the city. That will be personal agreements between them and the private property owners.
As long as they're compliant with other ordinances, both zoning and other regulatory ordinances.
The locals will say that.
Okay, okay.
So what I'm looking for tonight is some feedback, if there's anything that you would like to see changed, any concerns you have. We'll bring these back in final form at the next meeting, along with resolutions, to set the areas where they will be allowed to vend in the downtown vending district, and a resolution setting fees.
And would you come back with a recommendation on the number allowed?
Yes. I think that would go along with the areas that we will ask Council.
I read it. Like what I see, I just wait for you to comment.
Dan did a very good job-
Yes, he did.
-on this.
Well, that's why he gets the big money.
Other comments or questions of Council?
Yeah, I have a couple points of clarification. I heard you say it's restricted to pedestrian alleyways.
To the pedestrian alleyway alongside what used to be American Pop, correct?
Okay. So we, so previously, last year, we had applicants who were requesting certain intersection corners-
Correct.
-that would no longer be permitted.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then, can you explain the purpose or intention of not allowing vendors to connect to city utilities? I think I know what it is, but I would like to hear the reasoning of the staff that came up with this recommendation.
Well, I mean, there are a variety of reasons. One, just in terms of utility usage is one, but also, you'd have to really track what level of usage they're going to need in terms of electrical, and if it's going to blow out any of your existing lighting and everything else that connects with that. You have your streetlights that connect usually as well. So it could pose a lot of other possibilities and things that we would rather avoid. Trash is also another component that we do have to address within the plan. And one of the reasons, really the reason why we looked at clustering the vendors is that there's really more strength with clustering them, and you'd actually be able to kind of promote that as an area, so that you could drive more traffic within the entire downtown, make people realize and aware that this is the location, and here's where they are typically once days and times are, become more consistent. Same with the mobile truck area. You'll see that example in other states where they're clustering them, and they're having, you know, high volumes of people coming into the area specifically for days when those trucks are there. So we also wanted to look at a space that wouldn't impact the existing parking that is downtown on specific days, and so really looking at a bigger strategy as to how does it work or intermingle with our brick-and-mortar businesses and the parking system that we have here as well.
And then my final question is on the first-come, first-served policy with the sidewalk vending. I heard that there will be restricted number of places where those can go, correct? And so if you have one applicant that submits three different applicants for the number of spots, so-
For three different cars?
For three different cars, or just having those particular areas covered and requesting certain times of the day to cover those areas? Is that still going to be part of the policy? I know that's confusing, because it was confusing to me last year.
I believe our intent is that the vendor who gets the license has that spot for all hours, all days.
Okay.
We're not piecemealing it.
Okay. So that would be a policy change from this past summer?
From name your location and days and times, yes.
Okay, okay. I really think this is a very thoughtful policy, and I think a lot of time went into it, so thank you for being so timely and getting us ready for the season to start.
Right.
Those are all my questions.
Other questions? Maybe just one, Christina, how much input did the, both the brick-and-mortar businesses and the vendors have in this? What were the concerns? How can I address them?
Well, and we, at the DDA level, we had our Business Development Committee meet and review. We added actually in Chris from the Rust Belt, as well as Jeff from Woodward Imperial was added into that group to have that discussion, mainly because he actually brought a lot of that out-of-state experience in working with it in California. So it was really good, you know, input from him on that, and dealing with some of the issues that Chris had dealt with over the year as well, you know, trying to manage those vendors himself became challenging, too. So, you know, trying to get our business owners out of the middle, out of being the middleman in some respects, too, and working directly with the city on these things, and having something that's very defined. The rest of the businesses that were on there, Jerome was on there, is Jerome still back here? Okay, Jerome left. So really taking into account different types of businesses that could be coming out, or vendors that could be coming out onsite as well. We know that it's not always going to be just food. We know that it's not always going to be just food. It could be, you know, a retailer. And so when you're looking at a sidewalk cart, it could be somebody who is selling clothes or jewelry or whatever it might be, and making sure that we're addressing those issues of, are they in front of a business that sells that exact same thing, and they're not paying taxes? So, you know, it was very much a concern in terms of our bricks and mortar businesses in that respect, but they do also see the value that vendors bring in, the street life, the activity, that it really kind of draws to the area. So they didn't want to see it die in any way, either. Just contain it and manage it a little bit better, and also hopefully manage it in terms of the overall system if there are going to be, if there's going to be debris and garbage that's created, and making sure that they are responsible vendors, taking care of that little area that, that's the space that they're responsible for.
And then the flip side of that, and maybe not just for Christina, but, so the vendors, we really sort of reacted to them last year a lot, maybe too much, but I mean, what we were trying to do is, you know, react to, I'm not making any money here, so, I mean, we want them to be successful, right? And so was their input, have they reacted to this? Have they...
You know, I've only heard from two who have come in looking to apply for next year, and one was Jock's Tacos, which, you know, won't even be affected by this. And I can't even recall who the other one was.
Was it Taco Mama? We met with Taco Mama.
I think it was Taco Mama. I think they will be happy to have some policies that make sense in place rather than...
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
And Scott, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that, but... Scott Maloney from Treat Dreams, he's also a push cart vendor at times, so...
Yeah, I only brought my cart, I think, one time last year, so I don't even know if that would be part of my business plan. But I like the idea, I like the idea of, in the alleyway, pedestrian alley, I think it makes a lot of sense. My experience, we did an event, and I just joined the nascent Michigan Mobile Food Vendors Association. We put on our first event at the Royal Oak Farmers Market. It was tremendous success, because there was variety. So I think anything we can do to get variety clustered in that walkway would be a great thing.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Scott. All right. Any additional questions or comments? And Madam Clerk, now you're looking, what are you looking for this evening? Because you just wanted reaction tonight. You want to come and bring this back to us?
If you're in agreement for us to bring final drafts and resolutions back next time, then that's great.
And no votes necessary tonight?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. That concludes the regular agenda for this evening. Our next item of business would be call to council. And I want to make sure I don't forget anybody this time, so I'm looking very intently. Well, Chief, I'm looking at you. Chief Sullivan, our fire chief, why don't you lead us off this evening?
Mr. Mayor, council, I'm just bringing a cert update. We just received 45 packs for the cert team. We have over 50 members. The first unit's been trained, about 43 people have been trained. So this is your federal tax dollars at work through the Department of Homeland Security, Michigan State Police. They brought us in 45 packs and 45 books so that we can continue to do the training at no cost to us, but equip the people that'll be out in the field working as cert members. So things are moving along very well.
Great.
Very good.
That's awesome. Chief Collins, anything from the police department this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening, all right. All right, seeing no one over there, I guess, am I missing anyone? That's all I see in the audience, right?
We've got the steering wheel, we've got Michael.
Very good. Our city clerk?
We have an election tomorrow. Get out and vote.
Thank you.
7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Very good. City manager, April McGrath?
Yes. Currently, staff and I are working on the budget development that will be presented to council in April. So I emailed everybody the dates to get in their calendar in the last briefs. Please take a look at that. I believe the first presentation is April 9th. It'll start at 6 o'clock. It's before the first, before the meeting, but it'll be the introduction of the budget, and then we'll continue to move forward through the month of April, with then an adoption in May. Also, I want to make note that currently, we have an ordinance that prohibits alcohol in public buildings that are owned by the city. As you know, we approved, we approved by resolution, the library. However, Mr. Chris has indicated that if we're going to continue to allow alcohol in the public buildings, that we need to relook at our ordinance and revisit that and make permanent changes. So I'm going to look to council to, if you want, I can bring some recommendations back to another meeting, or we can, I don't know, I'm just kind of looking at a little bit of the direction in which you would like to do with this.
Can I say something?
Yeah, of course.
To the chair?
Please.
We had, Dan, if you recall years ago, we brought this up, and you still have a copy of that?
Of course, I could circulate the draft.
Yeah. I mean, that way you've got a...
Yeah, I mean, just a starting point, if council wishes to see it.
So currently, our ordinance prohibits alcohol on public property unless council...
Unless there's a long-term lease in place.
Yeah.
And there's some thresholds with respect to that. Obviously, councils on the regular agenda's already approved the resolution with respect to the library event, but if, if the ordinance, really the ordinance should be amended to expressly allow for that type of potential use in the future, if council is going to allow that type of use in the future.
Okay.
So it sounds like we at least need to revisit this. Certainly, if the library's going to continue to come to us occasionally, at least with this request, we'll have to see how that fits with our ordinance, so...
Well, just to give you a little bit of history, council did receive requests prior from another department, the recreation department, to allow alcohol at the Kulik Center as a way to increase revenue streams into the center. And they also had lots of customers asking for bridal showers and baby showers to have wine and whatnot, and so I think...
That's what the last vote was a few years ago about, regarding that.
So those would be the types of considerations we would have to think about.
Yep. Good. Thanks. So you want to make those?
We'll continue to postpone.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay. City Attorney Dan Chris, anything else for us this evening?
Nothing else this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Martin?
A couple things. This past weekend, I was able to attend the Michigan Municipal League's Core Weekender Program for Elected Officials. And if you haven't attended one of these sessions, I would highly recommend it. It was public officials from across the state, and it covered topics, everything from taxation issues to roles of elected officials, and it was just a great experience. So I would highly recommend anybody taking advantage of their Elected Officials Academy. It's something I'll continue to pursue and well worth the time.
I also had the opportunity to meet last week with the Ferndale Historical Society, and I just want to send some kudos out to them. I've always enjoyed the museum, but it really broadened my mind about the amount of work they do on a volunteer basis, particularly since we've had staffing changes here and at the library. They field a large number of genealogy and research questions and do a really fine job with it. So if you get the opportunity to go out, take a look at the museum, support the museum, it's really a treasure for the city. I'd highly encourage you to do it, and the volunteers there are just doing really great work. Jerome mentioned earlier the Rotary Dinner. I have tickets if anyone wants to buy them.
And you always got tickets.
I always have tickets to sell for something. And I've also just wanted to commend Chief Sullivan, I've gotten really good feedback on the cert program so far from the folks that are participating, so I think that's going to be a really nice added value to our community. And lastly, just please vote tomorrow. Historically, our turnouts for these things have been low, so it's really important for folks to show up and vote, and I personally encourage you to vote yes on the millage tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Mike?
Well, to piggyback off what Dan said, yes, I voted for the millage. I voted for the continuing millage already. I support the millage. I encourage everybody to vote yes. I think strong schools help bring strong neighborhoods, which make strong cities, and I encourage a yes vote tomorrow. Thank you. There's another vote on the ballot. See, what is that? Something's been going on?
Kind of...
Yeah, some sort of primary.
Some sort of primary.
Yeah, I don't think, I can't believe people...
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mayor Protem Piana, anything from you this evening?
Just wanted to say exercise your right to vote and review the ballots, because there are three ballots. It's a little bit more complicated this year than previous years, so you may want to give yourself a little extra time to, at the ballot box. And then my updates on regional rapid transit. This past, what did it say? This past Friday, the Federal Transportation Administration through the governor's office hosted a training event on bus rapid transit, or also called as rolling rapid transit, at the Detroit Zoo. And it was for transit supporters and folks interested in elected officials to learn about how bus rapid transit functions. And it's the best quote that I heard from the presenters from Vegas, Colorado, and Portland was, "It's not your grandfather's bus stop." So I think we have a real opportunity as a region to make real progress in the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, the Transportation Committee up in the House is taking testimony at SEMCOG, and I will be representing Ferndale at the hearing so that they make sure that they vote positive for the Regional Transportation Authority. And so I just wanted to recap why I'm doing all of this work on behalf of Ferndale, is because I really see regional rapid transit as a huge economic development tool for not only the region, but also for Ferndale. And really proving, giving more people choice and getting around to their jobs and go to the grocery store and go see grandma is really what it's all about. And so that's just my announcement for today, and encourage any of your state reps or senators to vote, and vote for the regional transportation legislation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Galloway?
Just to add a few comments on tomorrow's election. If you haven't decided what you're going to do, there's a great website out there, citizensforqualitieschools.org, that has a very clear and easily understood FAQ section that can answer and answer your questions and clarify any misunderstandings that might be floating around out there. So, down votes for our schools.
Great. Appreciate it. Just a couple things from me. Council has met twice in the last month to establish our priorities for the year, and I want residents to be aware that we've done this. We've created this list. We approved it tonight in a special session before, so it wasn't on the television. But city manager, I'm going to ask that, once you get these cleaned up, that we post these somewhere on the website. I encourage residents to take a look at them. There's 14 things that we think are the highest priority that we need to be working on over the next year. You may have opinions or thoughts about some of those, and we would love to hear them. So take a look at the priorities we adopted tonight when they're posted on the website. We'd love to hear back from you on that. I'm not going to be able to make the Rotary Club Dinner because I have another engagement that evening. I'll just tell you, the South Oakland Mayor's Association meeting is meeting, and the reason that I can't miss it is because it's being hosted by Troy Mayor Janice Daniels. As you can imagine, I want to go meet her and break some bread with Mayor Daniels, and so that's where I'm going to be that evening. Please vote tomorrow, and have a great night, everyone. Meeting adjourned.